Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule and establish a quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 11th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and the use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or any other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda, off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the Board, by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda, off-agenda item, and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please rise and join Supervisor Kennedy in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Again, welcome to today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Again, as a friendly reminder, those who wish to address the Board on any item on our published agenda are certainly welcome to do so. You are also welcome to address the Board on any matter that is not on our agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to no more than two minutes. That way, everyone who wishes to address the Board has the ability to do that. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first item.
Our first speaker this morning for, for public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda is Ryan Harris.
All right. You guys had some time to think about my question last time I was here. So I was wondering if you guys had an answer for it yet. And to the people at home, they're probably going to say they can't talk back per your guys' instruction, that you guys can't address the public while they're standing here. But we all know that's kind of BS because you guys pick and choose when you want to reply, as it's all recorded and there's multiple videos of it. So I'm wondering if you guys have an answer for me, or is this the time you're going to pick and choose to follow the rules? Sounds like you're picking and choosing to follow the rules right now. Which leads me to, why didn't you pick and choose to follow the rules when it came to giving you guys your raises that you voted in? I read the report, and I hope the grand jury looks into it, too. And this is another reason that I'll probably bring it up once these seats get filled more, as to why people need to pay attention to these things. Because in your guys' reply as to why you gave yourself so much money, you said, "We opened it up to the public and they didn't say anything." So, to the people at home, this is how they take advantage of you. They open it up to the public at these meetings, and you guys don't attend, and then they hold it against you. Yeah. With these last ones, I'll ask another one of you. Why did you allow the man to demote me, or fire me, and write a letter saying that I wanted to kill people at work? That's a damn lie. You guys have an answer for that? Because you guys promoted him, again. No? No? Okay. I can wait. You guys just like rumors being spread like that? You guys support that? Those rumors maybe followed you guys, or rumors were spread about your loved ones? How would you feel? Think about it, it might happen.
That concludes our public comments this morning.
Great, thank you. All right. Next item, please.
The next item is presentations, which are timed at 10:15 AM.
Can we do nominations?
We'll take item number 33, which is nominations to Boards and Commissions. We are continuing to April 22nd, 2025 Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Elk Grove-Casumnes Cemetery District, Sacramento County Youth Commission. Continuing to May the 13th, 2025, it's the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Guards Arnold Cemetery District, Sheriff Community Review Commission, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to May 20th, 2025, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, and the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. That brings us to nominations for today. Our first item is for the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Rodriguez, you have six seats for District Four nominations.
Please nominate Chris Jansen, and do not waive the process.
Second. Do not waive the process.
Do not waive the process.
Oh, sorry. I withdraw my motion.
And then for the remaining, there's remaining seats.
For the next meeting.
Thank you so much. We next have the Art and Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond, there are three District Three nominations.
Please nominate Michael Beller, and reappoint Bo Biller and Alex Carl.
Thank you. The County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Walton-Casumnes. Supervisor Hume, there is one District Five seat.
I don't have my vote sheet with me. Whatever you have down will be fine.
Continuing to May the 13th.
Let's do that.
Okay, sounds great. And then also the Human Services Coordinating Council. Chair Serna, there's four community member seats.
Chief's recommending continuing this item to May 20th.
Thank you. For the North Highlands-Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Kennedy, there is one seat for District One nomination.
No.
No.
Okay.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
There may be, but it's not.
I'm so sorry. Supervisor Serna.
Please continue the item to May 20th.
Thank you. And Supervisor Desmond, for District Three, there's two seats.
Please nominate Amy Finley for Crystal Harding's seat, and continue the remainder to May 20th.
Thank you. For Rio Linda Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Rodriguez, there are two District Four nominations.
Please continue the seats to April 22nd.
Thank you. For the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Supervisor Rodriguez, there's one District Four seat.
Please continue to the 22nd of April.
And Supervisor Hume, there's two District Five seats. My records show me the 20th. Does that sound good to you?
It would make it 20.
Sounds good, thank you. And Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Supervisor Kennedy, there is one District Two seat.
Please nominate Tamisa Wash, and waive the process.
Second.
And that item does pass unanimously. And there's the Sacramento, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Chair Serna, there's one, or Chair Serna, there's one District One seat.
Yeah, please continue to May 20th.
Thank you. And Supervisor Kennedy, there are four District Two seats.
Please continue to May 20th.
Thank you. And the Veterans Advisory Commission, Supervisor Desmond, there's one District Three seat.
Please nominate Matthew Cicado, and waive the process. Second.
And that item does pass unanimously. And Supervisor Hume, there's one District Five nominations. My records show me the 20th. To continue to?
Please.
Thank you. And lastly, for the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Kennedy, there are two District Two seats.
Please nominate Fong Hodgson.
Okay. And...
And continue the rest to May 20th.
To May 20th?
Yes.
Thank you. And Supervisor Hume, there are four District Five nominations. Would you like to continue those to May 20th as well?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our nominations and appointments for Boards and Commissions.
All right, very good. We do have a presentation at 10:15, and so we will stand in recess until then. Okay, call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule and establish a quorum?
Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number two is Literacy Foundation Special Presentation.
Hi there. Thank you so much for having us here, Supervisors. It's really nice. I'm April Javist, and I'm here with my staff, Rigo Tovar and Messiah Malaris. Messiah Malaris won the Sacramento, next slide, please. He won the, he was the winner of SVP's...
You're gonna have to, I think you're gonna have to operate yourself.
Oh, okay. How do I do it? Sorry. I didn't, I didn't know.
No, no worries.
My mistake. Oh, press that one. Okay, here we go. All right, Messiah Malaris, he was the winner of SVP's Fast Pitch in 2024, and so we're gonna start there. Messiah Malaris.
Thank you so much, April. Hello, everyone. Hello, Supervisors. My name is Messiah, and I'm with the Sacramento Literacy Foundation. 62% of third graders in Sacramento are not reading at grade level. That's 62%. As adults, these struggling readers will have a hard time in finding a job, securing a home, and casting a vote. If you cannot read, you cannot participate. The Sacramento Literacy Foundation, that's all three of us, our mission is to help every child read. We do this by delivering diverse, culturally relevant books to our most under-resourced kids and advocate for the science of reading, a proven teaching method that can help most children learn to read. Now, we've had the privilege of being able to serve 16,000 of Sacramento's most under-resourced kids, and each student receives five books that reflect their gender and their ethnicity. Because research shows that when kids are able to see themselves in their books, they're able to pull from their own lived experiences to become faster and more confident readers. Here's one of my favorite stories I like to tell folks. I helped in one of our book giveaways for the kindergartners, and I asked the kids, "Who here likes to read?" Only a few hands went up. After everyone got their bags of books, Kareem, a refugee from Afghanistan, he comes up to me and whispers, "I don't know how to read." Kareem is like most of our kids who can't read. They feel ashamed. As everyone's opening up their bags of books, I hear Ramadan, Ramadan, Ramadan. All of the kids are excited about one book in particular, Moon's Ramadan. And then, I hear Kareem sounding out the book title, Ra-ma-don. Ah! It's a familiar word, and in that moment, a word that he reads for the first time. Kareem's reading journey has just begun. Now, our book giveaway also helps us build relationships with schools, teachers, and parents to share tools and information about the science of reading. So here's a few science of reading concepts. One, ask your child about the story you just read. Two, pick a word, once a week, learn it, and sound it out. Three, have your kiddo read to you and listen. Our intentionality in what we do is what makes us unique. We give books to our most under-resourced kids who may not have them in their homes. We make sure they see themselves in their books, and that gives us an opportunity to help parents help their kids learn to read. Now, if Kareem and his classmates were equipped with the science of reading, we would see all hands rise when asked, "Who here likes to read?" The literacy crisis is solvable. So today, I'm asking all of you to please include literacy in your future initiatives. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Messiah. Yep, he was competing with 20 other nonprofits, and he won with reading, which was really awesome for us. So, I want to give you a report on literacy in Sacramento County, and hopefully this is the beginning of a kind of long relationship where we get our kids reading. So, reading is the number-one equity skill, if you think about it. And please do spend some time thinking about it, because if you can't read, you basically can't participate fully in our society, whether that's voting, getting a job. Once you become an adult, things get very, very complicated. Number-one reason people are headed to jail is because they have difficult time on the street, end up getting arrested, and they get turned in and out of jail. Not prison, jail. So that's an interesting study just to think about, because I know we have issues there. The majority of kids in Sacramento County, and the country, and the state, are not at grade-level reading. That's the crisis that we're trying to bring to your attention. So, in California, 42% of our kids are at grade-level reading, third graders now. This is just the third grade. We're measuring the third grade because in the fourth grade, you're, you have to read to learn. Up to the third grade, you're learning to read. But in the fourth grade, you have to read to learn. And if you're behind, then everything that you're doing next is a struggle in that classroom. And those kids are struggling, a lot of them. 38% of Sacramento County kids are at grade-level reading, and 35% are at grade-level reading in unincorporated Sacramento. So I put some data together from our California Literacy Map so that you could see it. These are choices that you can make on the map. This is Sacramento County, 218 schools. We went down by 1% last year in grade-level reading. But more importantly and hopeful is that we went down in truancy by 5%, and that's good news. COVID really increased truancy. We were at about 17%, 18% across the table, and then it increased truancy in some places to 50% and 60%. So schools are working hard at truancy issues. How to get kids back in the seats, how to get parents there.
Can I, can I interrupt here? If you can go back to the slide.
Let's see if I can do it. Oh, boy.
I'm a, I'm a map nut. So, map nut here. So, nope, nope.
Okay.
There you go. I don't see a legend here. So what are we looking at?
Those are schools. These are all the schools in Sacramento County. It's a good question, and I, I'll make that better. So these are, each, each of these dots represents a school where third graders took the cast score. The redder that school, the less, the less kids passed. And I'll give you, I'll show you a little more data so you can look at it. But these, all, all those dots represent an elementary school that took the cast.
So, if I read that correctly, it looks, and they, the dots are coalescing, and some places overlapping there. So, it looks like places like Del Paso Heights, Hagginwood, North Sacramento, Meadowview, South Sacramento, maybe North Highlands, even, even some parts of, towards Citrus Heights. It looks like there's some intensity there.
There's, yeah, there's intensity across the system. I mean, let's just look at it.
But this is a map of relativity, so...
Yeah. All kids are struggling right now.
Right.
And those yellow dots, at best, represent 60% at grade-level reading.
Mm-hmm.
The yellow dots don't represent like a 90%. But let me just keep showing you how I've broken it down. It might help you. We have right now, so this is a little bit of a side, but we have 13 school districts in Sacramento. That's a lot of school districts. We have about 288,000 kids. 20,000 of them are third graders. So, this is how they rank in terms of grade-level reading. And, and I did it by big schools and small schools. I've also given you a presentation that has all this information in it, so that you don't have to digest it all right now. This is incorporated Sacramento versus unincorporated Sacramento. So I've, I've taken the cities, so we can see that incorporated Sacramento has about 40%. Unincorporated Sacramento has about 35%. So maybe, you know, support coming from city municipalities is helping to some degree. This is your districts here, and I'm sure you're all interested in that. Each of you have a school district, and what we do is we take the year before and measure it up or down. So Phil, your district went up by .08%. But in general, speaking, we're not doing a good, you know, we're not in a good place in any of the school districts relative to reading.
Yeah, I would, I would say, okay, it may have gone up, but from what?
Right, exactly. You know, we're in a, we're in a literacy crisis. There's no question about that. So what are we doing about it? We have some programs. We have a book giveaway program you heard a little bit about. We have summer reading initiatives, and we have our California Literacy Map. We are also a literacy convener, and we bring together the Sacramento Literacy Coalition on a monthly basis, and we also advocate for the science of reading. And I'll get a little more into that. We have given out 100,000 culturally relevant, diverse books in the last four years to the poorest kids in Sacramento County. We go to elementary schools that are Title I, 80% or greater, but mostly 90% or greater. Because if you recall before the, before the pandemic, there was a lot of talk about kids didn't have books in their hands. So that's what we focus on, books in their hands. We've estimated there are about 28,000 TK through second graders living in poverty, and we've reached 10,000 of them discreetly. We feel pretty good about that, and we're gonna go after all those kiddos. Each bag of five, we have five culturally relevant, high-quality books, and there's a lot of research underneath that, even though we just hand the kid the books to take home. Five books is what it takes to hold on to skills that you've gained before. Books in the home is as significant to a child's college trajectory as their parent's job and college or education attainment level. Hugely important, and it's simple stuff, like this is the front of a book, this is the back of the book, this is the spine of a book. So that when they get into TK, they're down that curve, right? And then seeing oneself in a book, which is not very easy for kids who are brown and black and Asian, mostly, most protagonists are either animals or white. And so seeing yourself in a book allows you to grab information that you already have and read faster, which is partly, partly what Messiah's Fast Pitch really showed us. We have some new initiatives coming up. We are looking to put a, a book in every kid's hands that goes to WellSpace, because that's a 92% low-income clientele. So we want to put a book in every one of those hands. And we're also looking to put a library in every one of the Twin Rivers Unified School District's first, second, and third-grade classrooms. Those kids already get books from us, and so this is to complement that. Twin Rivers is working really hard on the science of reading and getting their kiddos reading, and I think we'll see some really good increases in the next few years relative to that.
Can I, can I ask, what, what does a classroom library look like?
It's a 52, it'll be like a 52-book classroom library. It'll be demographically aligned to the kids' grade-level reading and to their demographic race-wise. So it'll just, teachers will use it in different ways. Some of them will let kids check out, some of them will make it a book club, because we'll give those kids also the book. I mean, actually, we're interested to see what we do with it, and what, what, what kind of programming comes out of it. So it's pretty, it's pretty exciting to be working with that district in particular. They're the poorest. Yeah. And I'll say something more about that. Oh, there is that little side piece over there. That's a piece that we give to parents. It's English, Spanish. Helps parents help their kids learn to read. Has tips on what they can do to support their kiddos reading. So, we also fund summer reading initiatives. We have a small endowment. We stuck to summer reading, and we get, we've given out about $200,000 over four years. We're looking to build our endowment so that we can give out $250,000 a year. Last year in the Big Day of Giving, Early Literacy received about $250,000. It's not enough, but we're gonna match that and then start from there. New funds are gonna be directed to tutoring, mostly because that's what's needed, more than anything tutoring, I would say. These are some things we do as a convener. We do a literacy report card, which you can find inside of our newsletter. It details the last several years of what's going on in SAC County. We do a monthly check-in. Last month, I mean, last month, last week, Dave Gordon came and talked to us about what the US Department of Education, what the impacts of that situation could be on California. And we, we have a literacy festival in September, September 27th. We are the people who brought together the All-America, we brought the All-America City Award to Sacramento in 2022 with our work in affordable housing and literacy. We are the Campaign for Grade-Level Readings local convener, and we're part of a national coalition for diverse books for all. So we're, we're busy. Policy, this is the last piece. Policy has to align with what's going on. So SCOE has introduced a Science of Reading Resolution, and we've been running around to all the districts, talking to the districts about getting them to also adopt the Science of Reading Resolution. Also, there's an initiative, this is a second year running, to get an assembly bill passed to, to get the science of reading included. And it, it really should pass, 11/21. I don't know if it will. It will cost money. If we don't spend some money on kids' reading, we're, we're never gonna get out of the homelessness, out of the poverty, out of the crime that we're in right now. Reading is totally associated with every one of those budgets. So, here's a big picture of the science of reading. 95% of brains can learn to read with this approach. And these are the six pillars of reading, just for your own edification. Kids need to learn them all, all at once. The things that are really getting missing is oral language, babies. If you have babies in your life, get them talking to you. Don't talk to them so much. Get them talking to you. They need to hear themselves make the sounds. Phonemic awareness is about sounds. Our alphabet has 44 sounds, 26 letters, 44 sounds. Imagine a kid in a bilingual home. Well, they're dealing with 44 sounds plus 30 to 40 more sounds in another alphabet, right? So that's, that's a lot of sounds that our bilingual learners need to practice. So those two things get missed a bunch before we get to phonics. A lot of people understand phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. But these first two pieces, without them, kids aren't learning, and that's where it starts to fall. Mississippi did it, and so can we. Mississippi, Mississippi passed a policy in 2013, implemented it in 2016, and by 2019, 85% of their third graders were at grade-level reading. 85%, you guys. It's a huge number. They're still leading the country, all said and done. But they're one of the poorest states. They're very diverse, so there's no reason we couldn't do the same thing. We have about half the population they have. So what do we want from you? Well, to consider, you know, right now, we're really unclear what the Department of Education cuts are gonna mean, particularly to Title I dollars. Title I dollars go directly to the poorest kids. They go directly to the kids who struggle to read, literally. So at cap to cap, we're bringing health together with literacy. We're, and we're looking to advocate for the $260 million that potentially Sacramento could lose with this whole US piece. Municipal budgeting, we'll have to think about adding education line items. And what I'd say is, please try to invest in literacy interventions that are effective, that are working, and that are based in evidence. And that's it. That's what I got. I left you with a book for your kiddos. I love this book, and I love to say this about it. You could try to rip this book up. You could chew this book. If you've ever had a baby that chews a book, you know that that's a drag, because the paper gets in their mouth, not this book. So we're gonna give these to the babies. Anyway, there you go.
All right, thank you, April.
Yeah.
We do have some members of the Board that are in the queue that would like to maybe ask you some questions, or have, have their own comments. I, I'm gonna take a liberty here and start us off, though.
Awesome.
First of all, I just want to thank you for, all of you, and congratulations for what you're doing as it relates to the mission of expanding literacy in our communities. And as I sit here and listen to you, and see the data, and listen to kind of what the objectives are, I can't help but reflect on my own late father, and certainly, I think Supervisor Kennedy will remember that, you know, our late mayor had a, kind of a motto that he stood by for several years. Everyone reads, everyone works, and everyone votes. So especially at the beginning of the presentation, that was, was resonating with me in the back of my mind, and couldn't agree with you more that reading is so fundamental to the ability to succeed, in fact, very early in life, you know. And one thing I didn't hear, and I think it may be, it's just because it is what it is, which is, I think, a great continued partnership, is kind of, what is this initiative on literacy doing to work hand in glove with First Five and its mission? Because I think, as you stressed in a few of your slides, you know, reading at early ages, I think I heard zero to five, or zero to three, is so critical because of how our brains develop at that, that young age. But certainly would, would love to understand kind of how that is progressing, working with our county's First Five Commission.
Well, if you could help us with that, that would be great. I did reach out to the First Five. I did reach out to the First Five, and what they said was that literacy kind of had fallen off of their strategic plan because of organizations like us existing. I feel like actually it would be great if First Five would, our First Five would adopt literacy.
Meaning, meaning that you're doing such a great job that it's, so I
I'm not sure.
I, I would love to, to help you out as Chair of the First Five.
Great, let's get there. Because, you know, Santa Cruz First Five, they are the Campaign for Grade Level Reading convener in Santa Cruz.
Sure.
So I would love a better relationship and a deeper relationship, particularly as we enter this WellSpace partnership, which we're, we're working on with the Measure L and the TOTE grants for trying to fund every kid getting a book, right, in that zero to five space that goes to a WellSpace visit. And so it would be great to get help with that, 100%.
Let's talk.
Okay, great, thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your comments. I'm going to also throw out another organization to ask if you're coordinating with.
Okay.
And that's SETA and, and the Head Start Programs, which is exactly your target audience.
Yes, it is. Now, we, we, I think I'm gonna, I'm doing cap to cap for the first time, so I admit this is a little new to me, but both SETA and I believe that group will be there, and I, so I'm looking forward to connecting more. We're much more connected to school districts and to nonprofits that are delivering literacy resources, and to parents who have kids who have dyslexia, who are mad. So those are the three major groups of people that come to the Literacy Coalition meetings. But these larger government groups, we haven't interfaced as much with, except for SCOE.
Yeah, right.
We've really partnered up well with SCOE, and it's, and really, we're going to cap to cap, because Dave Gordon said last week, go to cap to cap. So I was like, all right, let's go to cap to cap.
And SCOE clearly a valuable resource for you.
Yeah.
I, I would reach out either to myself or Supervisor Desmond is the, the current Chair of the SETA Board.
Okay.
And I serve on it.
Fantastic.
But, you know, because then you're dealing with all of the districts as well, but you're dealing with a different subset in the Head Start Program, not necessarily the K-12 classroom.
Okay.
But again, it's, it's really your target audience of what, what you're talking about.
Yeah, great, that's great.
Okay.
I will do that. I will follow up with all of you on this stuff.
I'd start with Supervisor Desmond.
Start with Rich Desmond, leave you alone, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna email you both at the same time.
Well, first, I want to say congrats to Messiah. That is quite an accomplishment, but it is very daunting to know that six, yet we're at the 62% of third-grade levels that are reading below. I, you know, I, it takes me back to my own personal experience, you know, growing up. I came from a bilingual family. We spoke Spanish at home, and then only because I had a sister that was three years old did I start speaking English somewhere around two, three, the age of two, three. But I do remember that, you know, it, how my parents were working, they were, you know, they, they were working parents.
Yeah.
And reading wasn't very important to them, but in retrospect, I think that would have been a very good thing for us to, to start reading and increase our English usage and, you know, it just has a very profitable, long-term benefit to a young person. I also was very interested or intrigued most recently when I learned about the library and all of the possibilities that it has, and online books, and what you can do that, you know, when you said, if we don't spend money on literacy, you know, things will continue to stay the way they are or worsen. What about, like, giving kids who struggle at a very low reading level, those Kindle books where they could read? And, and you mentioned something that really caught my attention. When I started reading about people that had similar experiences like me.
Right.
Immigrant parents and, and certain things, those books truly became more interesting. And I think as I got into middle school or high school, I remember reading The Grapes of Wrath, but, and, and it talked about, like, certain struggles of, you know, Latinos in America, and, and so, but it was relevant, and it was interesting, and it made me want to learn more about the author and what other books he had written. So, but anyways, going back to the library and the usage and getting books, getting Kindle books to these young kids, because once they start reading several different types of books, it hopefully will increase their reading level.
Yeah. The library does a great job.
They do.
I mean, I would say that its biggest literacy intervention is summer reading, because kids get awarded, rewarded for reading five books. And that's how you hold on to your skills, like, that's like the gym. Five books is like going to the gym. It's how you hold on to the muscle that you gained before. And so I think the library does a really good job at that, that, that program in particular.
Yeah.
I don't know about getting kids Kindles. I'm, we've, we've pushed a, a program called Always Dream into Twin Rivers as well, and the kids get an electronic book, the parents do. And they're going to use it as a way to get parents interested in the resources to get their kids back in the seats, but it's 40,000 diverse books on a Kindle that's available to them. And so that's also, that's a, a good program. Sometimes, you know, the hard part about libraries, to be honest, is that a lot of poor families aren't anywhere near a library. The kids are, are a freeway away, a big street away, and so we need more mobile libraries to, to, to kind of, you know, spoke out from the, from the branch libraries and get more bookmobiles. My, my vision for the library would be a bookmobile for every library that has music and that runs around to the communities where kids can't get them, and kids recognize it and run to it in the summer. That would be my, that would be my dream.
That would be awesome.
If I had lots of money, that's what I would give the library money to do.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, it would.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation, April, Messiah, and I can tell by the enthusiasm from my colleagues here on the dais that your mission resonates. And, you know, I've been helping for many years, helped them raise funds at their annual fundraiser, to do what they're doing. So I just want to put it kind of a finer point on some of the issues that were raised. The first being that, you know, a lot of the adjectives, culturally relevant, underserved, I mean, these are being bandied about as bad words right now, but it's so important because, as Supervisor Rodriguez said, you know, when you're in a household, that you're, can't see yourself represented.
Right.
Right? Like, we're looking for that hook that gets the kids interested in the story, so that then they want to read the story. But in many cases, you have a household where struggling to survive and flying beneath the radar so that you can just kind of get by. And maybe reading is seen as a waste of time. Why are you sitting over there reading? Why aren't you doing something more productive, right? Like, there's all these barriers already that are up there. And then with the summer reading program, which prior to the recognition of what a severe literacy issue there is, in summer reading, if kids don't continue that reading through the summer, they fall back, what was it, half a grade level, a full grade level? Like, all the work that had been done gets washed away because they don't have the muscle memory.
Right.
And so the last thing that I'll say, just to close here, and this is more for the folks who may be watching this presentation, not so much, I think, up here on the dais, we get it, but the whole purpose of this foundation is to make able-minded citizenry. And so much of that is foundational in being able to read.
Yeah.
And, and it starts there, and, and the numbers speak for themselves as far as how far behind we are. Thank you, Chair.
I want to put a pin on what you just said. I, first, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk today. Secondly, I want to say something about parents. I know they're busy, but here's what we found. When we meet a parent who gets that bag of books, we say, I ask them, well, what, what did you do? Well, we read the book. I said, did they have a favorite? Oh, yeah, it was the one about that. So here's what I've learned about poor parents. They make decisions very fast about what is going to make sense for their kid and what's not. And so I don't think they pick up some books because they don't make sense for their kid. I think they do pick up our books because, A, they're seeing themselves for the first time, and B, it makes sense for their kids. We had one little girl, she was in a hijab, she went to her teacher crying, because on the cover of the book was a little girl with a hijab. She's a big reader, very, very strong. She was crying because she's, I've never seen myself in a book, right? And so that's that culturally relevant part. She was just, like, overwhelmed. Kids are so excited to get the books, and parents are too. I don't think parents, I, I don't think poor parents, I, I think they're making decisions, is what I really think they're doing. And I think they're just making the best decision they can for their kids. But I think most parents know their kids need to learn to read. When we talk to parents, those kids, those parents who have kindergartners come in online, they're all worried. What do I do? What's this information? How do I use it? This is up on my refrigerator. So I just want to say something positive about parents, too. They, they make decisions, and they're making good ones. But if you hand a black family the boxcar kids, they're not going to be as interested. Just the same as if you handed a white family all diverse books, right? So culturally relevant means culturally relevant to every demographic. So that's, that's just important to say. It's not one demographic or another that's culturally relevant. Yeah, all right.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, and thank you, April and Messiah. I just want to underscore everything my colleagues have said here, and also, when you're at cap to cap, I'm sure you'll be highlighting some of your advocacy efforts, some of the unique characteristics of Sacramento County, and one that really strikes me is not only do we have a, a large under-resourced community, but we have a very large refugee population.
Yeah.
In particular, Afghan refugees. And, and so if you need, I'll be at cap to cap as well.
Okay.
If you want another voice from the county to join you in any of your advocacy, advocacy efforts, I'd be happy to do that.
I will come find you.
And also want to underscore what Supervisor Kennedy said about SETA. We also have a Refugee Services Coordinator at SETA, Coordinator at SETA as well. So I think coordinating with them on Head Start and, and with that, that Services Coordinator, there's a lot of, I think, resources there you could tap into, and I'm happy to, you know, connect you with the right people.
That's awesome, thank you. Such a nice reception, thank you, guys.
Thank you, April.
Next item on the agenda is our Consent Matters, Items 3 through 24.
Any, anyone from the public sign to speak, first of all?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the board have questions or wish to pull an item for separate vote consideration? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move, I consent, Items 3 through 24.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
And that item goes past unanimously.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, next item, please.
Item 25 is the reclassification of North Watt Avenue from a one-way couplet smart growth street to a thoroughfare smart growth street within the general plan, board concurrence with hybrid urban boulevard alternative from the reimagine North Watt Complete Street Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning. Cameron Chu, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation, and I'll be presenting the reimagine North Watt Plan. I have about 15 slides, some to go through relatively quickly in six or seven minutes, and we can go back if there's a desire to fill in some more details. I'm also joined by Josh Bilcheski, who's our consultant on the project. So for some background information, the original North Watt Corridor Plan was first passed in 2012 with the intent of guiding growth over a 20-year planning horizon. This resulted in the current couplet roadway plan, which I'm going to talk about in some additional detail on a future slide. But since 2012, the corridor plan has not really taken off. Some criticisms that staff have heard are unrealistic development standards, utility constraints, and lack of clear direction on the roadway plan. So Planning Environmental Review currently has an effort underway to address many of these issues on the land use and zoning side, and DOT was able to secure a Caltrans planning grant to look at the roadway challenges. Since 2012, we also recognize that landscape has changed, there's increasing focus on equitable investment in disadvantaged communities, a county focus on prioritizing housing, as well as responding to the climate crisis. And a few of the cap implementation measures that I want to highlight that are going to be addressed by this plan are GHG 11, increasing transit ridership, GHG 12, implementing the Active Transportation Plan, and GHG 13, advancing infill development. So we're really excited about this corridor plan, as it addresses three of the county's top priorities of housing, climate, and roads. This just shows the extent of our study area, which is a three-mile stretch of North Watt Avenue between Antelope Road and Peacekeeper Way in the North Highlands Community, which is split between District 1 and District 4. So the purpose and need of this project was really driven by the existing deficiencies observed out in the field, as well as we heard from residents, which include inconsistent bike lanes and sidewalks, lack of transit amenities, and deferred maintenance. The alternatives in this project were really going to be evaluated based on how well they met the project goals, providing comfortable and safe experience for all road users, meeting ADA and design standards, and accommodating the growth envisioned in the original corridor plan. We started by reviewing existing conditions, screening and reviewing potential alternatives, and finally conducting a more detailed evaluation of the final alternatives. At each step along the way, there was input from a corridor advisory team of stakeholders, an in-person community workshop, and online feedback tools. This is a little more information about our public outreach strategy, but I'm going to save most of those details until the project alternatives. So in addition to review and input from the corridor advisory team and three public workshops, we also attended about 10 community meetings, roundtables, and school events. So before getting into the final alternatives, it's important to first cover the currently adopted circulation plan of the area, which is the couplet system. As it stands, the general plan today, North Watt Avenue would be converted to three lanes of northbound traffic, 34th Street, three lanes of southbound traffic. The biggest concerns we've heard about this current plan are the significant expansion of 34th Street, which is currently a rural residential road today, as well as the fact that existing businesses along Watt Avenue would see about half the traffic, pass-by traffic diverted over to 34th Street. We really ended up focusing our final alternatives into keeping growth and improvements along Watt Avenue instead of 34th Street. So the first alternative that we looked at is what we're calling the minimal footprint or minimal right-of-way impact option. This would complete the missing pieces of the bike lane and sidewalk along Watt Avenue, but not change the number of travel lanes at all. It would provide for modest improvements to bus stops and landscaping to keep the corridor looking largely like it does today. And this alternative was really driven by concerns that we heard from the community about right-of-way acquisitions affecting properties. The green areas shown in this figure are really potential landscaping and placemaking opportunities, but for the most part, the curb line would not change from what's out there today. And there's just a rendering of what this alternative might look like. The other final alternative is being called a hybrid urban boulevard, which is really a combination of two prior alternatives from the screening process. This alternative would provide for Class 4 bike lanes, which protects cyclists from high-speed traffic with concrete medians, as well as wider eight-foot sidewalks. This would widen Watt Avenue to a consistent six-lane roadway by adding one travel lane in each direction between Elkhorn Boulevard and Antelope Road. This extra lane was really driven by transit, as SAOC has assumed future bus rapid transit or BRT along Watt Avenue. And while regional transit is not yet ready to implement BRT service at this time, they requested that we not preclude it with our alternative selection. So ultimately, with the protected bike lanes and future BRT compatibility, we do end up with a bigger roadway footprint, but this does add some additional opportunities for landscaping and placemaking. This is a rendering of the hybrid urban alternative. So getting into the community and stakeholder feedback, we've included a summary of that in the board materials. To broadly summarize, there were, there were two camps of thought that we heard. So there were some individuals that were concerned about eminent domain and expanding the roadway footprint, particularly impacts to parking lots and storefronts, and those folks leaned towards the first alternative. We also heard from some that expressed concerns over the high-speed, high-volume traffic, emphasizing the need for safer facilities with the second alternative. The Disability Advisory Committee Physical Access Subcommittee and Sacramento Bicycle Advisory Committee, SACPAC, both recommended the hybrid urban alternative. At the North Highlands CPAC, there was not a quorum, so an official recommendation could not be made, but the one council member present indicated his concern about right-of-way in the, in preference for the minimal impact option. So in making our recommendation, county staff were sensitive to concerns that have been raised about right-of-way, while we're only in the planning stages at this time. Both alternatives will require additional right-of-way, and there will be a process in place to fairly compensate affected property owners with either option. What we have to balance is whether the additional costs in right-of-way is justified by the benefits of the project. In this case, staff believe that the additional protected bike lane, wider sidewalks, increased landscaping, and compatibility with SAOC and RT's long-term transit plans justify the additional right-of-way and costs for the hybrid urban alternative. While both would undoubtedly represent an improvement over the existing conditions, we believe this best meets the purpose and need of the project and best position the corridor for transformative investment. So that is our recommendation today. Lastly, on this slide, this summarizes the staff recommendation, which would be to recognize the exempt status of this request under SEQA, receive and file the final report, approve the recommended alternative, and direct Planning Environmental Review to reclassify various roadways to transition from the couplet plan to this new alternative. And that concludes my presentation.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Cameron? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public sign to address this matter?
We do. We have one member of the public, public Zach Friels. We have one member of the public, Zach Friels.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for recognizing me and opportunity to speak here. My name is Zach. I'm a homeowner within the project vicinity. I also serve on the Parks Board there. I'm also co-founder of the North Highlands Roundtable, as well as Sacramento Investment Without Displacement. I stand here today to ask a few things, one of which is, don't take any decision on this specific update today. The reason being is there has been some deeply flawed community engagement here that I want to point out, one of which is, there are at least six churches on this corridor that we're not reach out to. Second, I live in the vicinity, I didn't get any communication, actually. I became aware of this project because of the North Highlands Roundtable, excuse me. The North Highlands Roundtable, I listened to the presentation, I followed up with the email and FAQ, and I got a bounce back saying they weren't accepting emails, nor did their listserv work. So the community engagement here is flawed. SAOC has a grant that's coming to this area for multimodals transportation. I think we should let that play out before we make any additional decisions. Further, I think the biggest disappointment I have here is I'm a big advocate for safe transportation. I used to ride centuries from Central City all the ways up to Auburn and back. I represented the Central City with council office when they converted their thoroughfares to those, with those road diets. What's really disappointing is in DKS's report, they identified they prescreened out a road diet because of concerns of traffic being offloaded onto 34th Street somewhere down in the distant future. I think that's not a good move here. I don't know of a single other project where they're proposing that will make things safer by adding additional lanes of traffic at nearly freeway speeds. This is actually going the face of the way in which the region is going, in which we should be engaging a road diet, which would meet those needs without the impacts on the property, the homeowners, or the businesses. Lastly, the money that that could save, the nearly $35 million, could be spent on potentially the cap corridor stop at Roseville and Watt, which the community has been asking for, or redeveloping the Rio Linda Creek waterway into a bike trail that could connect us to the North SAC and Dry Creek and bikeways themselves, which give us access to downtown Sacramento. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Friels. Okay. Cameron, if you want to come back. So first of all, the speaker began by referencing, in his opinion, a lack of outreach, or maybe at least his experience was that he wasn't extended invitation, I guess, at times to participate in some of that. And I have concerns only because one of your slides seemed to show an extraordinary amount of effort that had been applied to acquire community input, including focus groups and various other types of convenings. So what is your general sense that, you know, what DOT set out to do in terms of having a robust outreach process did, or how it was accomplished? Is it, is it a process that compared to others, we learned by, and so that we, you know, we tried to cover every base that we could? Is there admittedly some gaps in things that we could have done better? So I'd like to kind of hear you address that first concern that he expressed.
Sure. And we knew early on that outreach would probably be a challenge with this project. Some of the feedback we've heard from, from planning and others, but there could be some outreach fatigue in this area because there's been so many planning efforts that have happened over the years. So we did try to cast as wide of that as we could. We did mail postcards out to everybody who's in a quarter-mile of the corridor. If anybody didn't receive one, you know, we can start to look into that and see if their address was missed for some reason. We did post physical flyers along the corridor prior to our workshops. In terms of social media, we worked through the county's Nextdoor account and Facebook page. We coordinated with the SACB around a couple of stories, highlighting the workshops and corridor plans out there, as well as had a project website and email a signup. And I know a number of folks did get those emails, but if there's any individuals that were not able to gun that list for some reason, we can certainly look into that. So we tried to cast as wide of that as we could, but certainly at some of those public workshops, there weren't as many people turning out as we'd hoped to see. But we get that a few folks are busy as well, so we also had an online option, too.
So in terms of the focus groups, when I hear focus groups, I think that they're formal focus groups, and by that I mean there, you have a firm that specializes in conducting focus groups, and you have the, you know, the two-way mirror, and, you know, you're kind of anonymously acquiring people's feelings, inputs, sentiments about, you know, whatever it is that we're trying to glean from, from the community. Is that the kind of focus group that was used here?
We did. We had, we had some targeted outreach with like McCullough and Business Parks and Business Groups, Sacramento Regional Transit, and then there was the community meetings where we came out to the North Watt Business Watch, McCullough and Business Watch, North Highlands Roundtable. We did a presentation at the North Highlands Recreation Park District. So we did do a combination of different events.
Okay. And then in terms of any growing concerns that DOT has taken inventory of, or that, or organized opposition, can you give us a flavor for what if any exists, or how that has changed over time as, you know, according to the project schedule in terms of rollout of community meetings, and now here being before the board?
We did receive a petition early on that was circulated to us through the North Highlands Recreation Park District. As we understand that, that wasn't a particular park concern, but that was rather generalized community concern about right-of-way impacts. The project did conduct a robust displacement analysis to look at what kind of policies we might implement to those affected by right-of-way takes. You know, right now, it's still in the planning stages, we can't get to the exact level of detail of how each individual property is going to be affected. But I'll say the general rule, when we go to do any kind of right-of-way acquisition, we look at how the project can be designed or tailored around those. So for example, there might be a business where we go from an eight-foot detached sidewalk to a five-foot attached sidewalk in an interim condition to avoid a property impact, but if the business were to redevelop in the future, we might look to meet the standard of the eight-foot separated sidewalk at that time. So there's a variety of ways we can handle that concern.
Okay. Switching to RIT for a moment, and I think I expressed this concern when I had a briefing on this about a week and a half ago. I think the future in terms of BRT, that regional transit would build and then operate, is very important to consider in all of our planning efforts in various corridors. I just want to make certain that if we are to approve the hybrid recommendation today, that again, that that means that there will be appropriate right-of-way that is preserved for all that might go into that. Is that, is that my understanding?
That is accurate, yes. The gentleman earlier referenced a potential road diet, and the road diet would be a potential component of a BRT project, so it would have to be evaluated in the future. So the way-
Let me stop you there. What does that mean? Does that mean that, that we would have to, that we, the board, might have to face, again, the prospect of maybe widening the ultimate right-of-way?
No. We would be building the ultimate roadway with this project, with the hybrid urban option. What a road diet could potentially do in the future is convert the outside two travel lanes to a bus-only lane.
Gotcha.
And that time, we'd have to look at where that traffic goes.
Okay. And then lastly, and I know Supervisor Kennedy shares some of this concern, and in fact, I was just talking to another colleague about it. What the city of Sacramento has done in the midtown, downtown areas, especially with, you know, I think the rightful attention to making it safer for especially cyclists to, to move in the attorney movements throughout our, the grid of downtown, midtown, is great. How it was fulfilled, implemented, for me, leaves something to be desired in terms of some of the implements they use, such as kind of the, you know, the thousands of plastic bollards-
Oxiloposts.
And, you know, and the green paint, which I understand why there's, you know, a, a green painted section of the roadway designated for cyclists. But what I think it totally ignored was what that ultimately does to the streetscape. And, and to me, that is just so, quite frankly, ugly and busy. And there's got to be a happy medium that exists between making it safer for cyclists to, in their movements alongside vehicles with theirs, that we can improve upon without destroying the, you know, the streetscapes in the process. So I would hope that we can actually learn from what the city's implemented and maybe steer clear of that, of those, my editorials. Supervisor Rodriguez.
So one of the questions I, I had is on the community outreach part. So I know some of these are targeted groups where they're already like watch groups, business groups that get together. How many community meetings did you do where invitations went out to the quarter-mile residents? And that would include, I assume, the businesses and the churches?
Yeah, we did three public meetings.
And how were they attended?
Fairly sparsely. The first meeting, if I recall, we had maybe a dozen folks show up. The second meeting, we had a couple, and the last meeting, I believe, we only had one or two people turn out.
Which is really low. Is that, is that normal in community meetings where information is gone now? I'm not very familiar with the number, but do you know how many individuals and businesses got, were sent a postcard?
Not off the top of my head, but that is low compared to turnout we would typically get. But also, at the, at the North Highlands CPAC meeting as well, we only had one person turn out, too, and that was for a separate item.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little concerning when you have somebody here who's stating that they, you know, they don't feel that this was communicated well to the communities and we have a low turnout of individuals. Thank you.
If I may also add, Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Executive, in my years in planning, doing related work, I've hosted lots of workshops, and there have been a number of times we've spent inordinate amounts of effort, time, money to message something out and seen the same types of turnouts. Not surprisingly, if it's highly controversial, you know, typically we'll see higher levels of turnout, but especially for these sort of longer-range master planning type of efforts. Anecdotally, my experience has been that we don't typically see a lot of turnout that, you know, it depends, you know, which community you're in, what you're proposing, et cetera. But I would say this is not incredibly atypical, even given the amount of work to push the message out. And I think also even, you know, it sounds like the CPAC at the time, there was only one member of the CPAC there, so, you know, we do what we can to engage the community, but, you know, just depending on the subject matter depends on whether or not we see a good turnout.
Mr. Fonte, on the, just the subject of how we, and what, how and what we do to try and maximize the invitation to participate in these types of projects in terms of getting public input, and I say this halfway tongue-in-cheek, but I mean, I assume that, that we are required by law to offer something like this, to put in, in newspaper of general daily circulation notice of, or not notice, but invitations or, or not? That's a good question.
This one was not actually subject to standard noticing requirements.
But we did it anyways, correct?
Um.
Yeah, you mentioned Sacramento Bee.
We were in some news stories about the project.
Oh, news stories? Okay.
Correct folks on the website.
Okay. And the tongue-in-cheek part of it is, I don't know that we can actually rely on the Sacramento Bee to get the word out as, as well as in years past, just because I think their leadership is what it is. And so I think we do need to take that into account generally, that we can't just kind of check the box and say, you know, it's now on the, you know, the newspaper's website and assume that someone's going to see it or read it, especially with their, their paywalls as they, they have been implemented. It's, I think it's a different day in terms of relying on newspapers for that, so just a, again, a little note on that.
May I also add that, you know, I've had community meetings in, predominantly in this area, that had a really large turnout, somewhere between 45 to 60 individuals. And so I think utilizing our community meetings would be a great way to be able to disseminate this information out to individuals, just to maybe give it also that sort of connection to the county supervisor who oversees that district, just because I was really, I was really impressed with the turnout that came out from just wanting to know what's going on in the county.
All right. I know that we have someone that has signed up late to address the board. We're going to do that before we hear from that individual, though. I'm going to put a motion on, on here at the dais to accept the staff recommendation and ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so the speaker is welcome to come to the podium. Now that we have a motion and a second on the floor to support staff's recommendation.
Hi, good morning, supervisors. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Katie Robb with Mutual Assistance Network, and I know some of you on the dais are familiar with our work. Mr. Friels mentioned that there's additional money coming from the county through SAOC for the Engage in Power and Ignite project. I wanted to go on record to let you all know that Mutual Assistance Network is the community engagement lead for that project, where we have set aside several dollars actually to really get into the heart of community and work hand-in-hand with some of the community-based organizations and community leaders, as well as, if you're familiar with our work, you know that our staff are reflective of the cultural, ethnic, and demographics of the community. And so I, I just wanted to say all that as you're looking to make your vote, to say that this project is coming, and there is intersectionality between what's being proposed here today and the future project. And I do have some concerns about us going out in community and folks feeling disengaged from the process of the decision that's being made here today, and then having us to go out there and do additional engagement work. I'd like to work in partnership with SAC, DOT, and DKS as we move forward in this process.
Great. Thank you. All right. No more public speakers that are signed up to address the board. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
That item passes four to one.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item number 26, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Sacramento County Water Agency and the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency to expand groundwater sustainability agency management area in the Solano Groundwater Sub Basin.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chair members of the board, I'm Chris Sunni, the Groundwater Sustainability Manager with the County Department of Water Resources. Today, we're holding a joint public hearing regarding a proposed expansion of the area covered by the Sacramento County GSA. This item involves two groundwater subbasins, the Solano and the South American. This action is necessary because as of February 1st, four of the five reclamation districts that currently serve as exclusive GSAs have withdrawn their exclusive GSA status. Those areas are now considered unmanaged under SIGMA. We're recommending that the board adopt resolutions to amend the existing 2021 SIGMA memorandum of agreement between the county and the Sacramento County Water Agency regarding the proposed GSA expansion. That's in Attachment 1 of your packet. The amendments will do three key things. First, they'll add approximately 23,000 acres of newly unmanaged area in the Solano Sub Basin to the SAC County GSA. Second, they'll formally include a 3,000-acre portion of the South American Sub Basin under shared GSA responsibility between the county and the Sacramento County Water Agency. This area had previously been left out because the MO, of the MOA, because it was small and the county had no plans to levy fees there, but for consistency and clarity, we want to bring them in now. Third, the amendments will authorize staff to execute the updated MOA and notify the State Department of Water Resources. If the county does not step in to assume GSA responsibility, the state water board may take over management and begin charging fees to local groundwater users. The state imposed costs can be very significant. It's $300 per well, can be up to $25 per acre foot of water extracted, which means water meters have to be installed at each private well. By expanding the GSA now, we can prevent unnecessary state intervention and preserve local control over our groundwater resources, and this is consistent with the county's longstanding groundwater management strategy. And then finally, the proposed amendments will allow future adjustments to the GSA boundary to occur administratively, where we won't have to modify the MOA. Staff recommend that the board open the public hearing, receive any public testimony, and then close the hearing. Following that, we recommend approval of the resolutions as outlined. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. This is a public hearing matter, so I will formally open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public sign up to speak?
We do not.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for deliberation. Any questions or motions?
Chair, I would move staff's recommendation to adopt the resolutions.
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote. Been moved and seconded, please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Very good, thank you.
Item number 27, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is for the Auburn Falls project to conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, authorize a conditional loan commitment of 2.5 million in housing authority funds with Sacramento Housing Authority repositioning program and approval of final bond documents for the project.
Very good, good morning.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Whitney Hinton with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Staff is requesting a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR, hearing, approval to loan $2.5 million in housing authority funds, and their approval of final loan and bond documents for Auburn Falls, the fourth rental assistance demonstration, or RAD, project. This project was before the board in April of 2024 for the approval to apply for bonds. The project was awarded and is now scheduled to close on funds next month. Since you all last heard about the project, there has been the removal of one of the sites due to the recent structural inspection that discovered serious issues which make the rehabilitation of the building impossible. The site will be demolished outside of the scope of this project at a later date. The project will now rehabilitate 76 former public housing units across four scattered sites located in the county of Sacramento and the city of Citrus Heights that consists of ones, twos, and three-bedroom units to households earning between 40 and 60% of area median income. The rehabilitation will address interior and exterior improvements, including the repair or replacement of mechanical systems, roofing, carpentry, plumbing, and flooring, also new kitchens, new bathroom fixtures, and new community spaces. Sacramento Housing Authority repositioning program, or SHARP, is the developer of the project. SHARP has completed two RAD conversions and is in the final stages of the third. Property management will continue under the Housing Authority. Resident services provided by Health Education Council. A minimum of 15 hours of resident services will be provided each week, including 11 hours of after-school programming. In closing, staff is requesting approval of a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act public hearing, approval to loan $2.5 million in housing authority funds, and approval of final loan and bond documents for the Auburn Falls project. And staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you for the report. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing matter, so I will open the public hearing. Ask the clerk, do we have any members of the public that have signed up to address the board?
We do not.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for deliberation, and look for a motion. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I also want to thank LaShelle and SHRA for the briefing on the project. And I'm very supportive and will move approval.
Second.
Very good, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 28 is the approval of conditional loan commitment in the amount of 6.9 million in Home Investment Partnerships Program and Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funds Disposition and Development Agreement for 5716 Stockton Boulevard with San Juan Mutual Housing Associates II LP for the San Juan Apartments II, a mutual housing community affordable housing project.
Good morning again.
Hello. Whitney Hinton with SHRA again. Staff is requesting approval to enter into a disposition and development agreement with Mutual Housing California and approval of a $6.9 million conditional loan commitment comprised of 2.4 million in home funds, 2.7 million in permanent local housing allocation or PLHA funds for the San Juan Phase II project. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency purchased eight parcels on Stockton Boulevard and Young Street, totaling 5.5 acres just south of Fruit Ridge Road. The parcels were purchased with former redevelopment and neighborhood stabilization program funds to eliminate the blighting influence caused by the former San Juan Motel and Mobile Home Park on Stockton Boulevard, and to assemble a larger site for high-quality development project. Upon the dissolution of the redevelopment, the parcels were conveyed to the Housing Authority of the city and the county. In November 2016, SHRA received approval from the County Housing Authority Board for a vacant lot disposition strategy which included the San Juan site. In August 2020, a request for proposals was released for the San Juan site. The selection panel was, the selection panel award at Mutual Housing California in December of 2020. Their proposal for the site included family, workforce, and permanent supportive housing development. In March 2022, Mutual Housing submitted a funding application to SHRA for the acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of the project. Given the limitations, the project was recommended to be phased for, to address feasibility issues. San Juan Phase I, which makes up seven of the eight parcels, is 113-unit multifamily workforce family housing development, and construction is underweight with anticipation to be completed summer of 2026. San Juan Phase II is the remaining county parcel owned by the Housing Authority of the county. It is a new construction permanent supportive housing for seniors. It will be a single four-story building with a total of 70 units consisting of studios and one-bedrooms for households earning between 30% and 50% of area median income. The amenities on-site will include a community room and outdoor seating area. This project was also awarded 39 project-based vouchers in 2023. Mutual Housing California is the developer of the project. Mutual Housing Management will be the property management company, and Mutual Housing California will provide a minimum of 15 hours of onsite resident services per week. Additionally, onsite coordinators will be onsite, including case management, to provide additional services to the 39 voucher households. In closing, staff is requesting approval to enter into a disposition and development agreement with Mutual Housing California and approval of a $6.9 million conditional loan commitment for the San Juan Phase II project. And staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, is a public hearing item?
It is not.
Okay, all right. At this point, then I look for a motion.
Is there public, any public comment?
There's no public comment.
No, I asked for a public hearing.
I will move staff recommendation.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, please vote. Okay.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 29 is the Fiscal Year 2025-26 Five-Year Technology Improvement Plan for Review and Approval.
Good morning supervisors, Rami Zachariah, Chief Information Officer. I'm pleased to present the 2025-26 Technology Improvement Plan. The five-year estimated TIP cost is $64 million, and prior year allocated costs were totaled more than $37 million, totaling 102 million, more than 102 million. The projects that we have on the technology improvement plan, first one is the Axella Software as a Service upgrade project. This is for a system that existed in the county since 2002.
Can I, can I stop you there? So in terms of the improvement in that, with that particular platform, I am remembering back, I'm looking at you, Dave, that I believe when you first came on and you gave this board and the public an assessment of kind of how we're doing in terms of the use of what we have in front of us when it comes to plan check, billing inspection, planning in general. I think your, your concern or comments then were, we have this tool that we're not using near its full capability. So maybe I'm beating you to the punch here on your slide presentation, but in addition to just kind of having the, the platform, what can you tell us about how well our personnel are actually using it?
Yeah, so I think it's a function, Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Executive, of how it was set up long ago, and I was part of that setup a couple decades ago. And essentially, we bought a Mercedes and we're driving, I'll use my Mazda example since that's what I own. And we're doing two things, and what Rami mentioned here is that we're migrating it to the cloud. So I think when I came to you early on a couple of years ago, I had mentioned that when we hired a consultant to look at all the things we're doing well and things that we need to improve, Axella was littered all over that consultant's report as something that we're not using to its full extent, much to our detriment and our customers' detriment. So it became a high priority very early on. It took us a while to launch, but we've done just that. This is absolutely my highest priority this year. And we have two things going on in parallel. We have the migration from the on-premises system to the cloud, which is something that I think brings a lot of value in terms of just safety, security, et cetera. And frankly, Axella is sunsetting its on-premises version, so in some ways, we really didn't have much of a choice. But then in parallel to that, we're actually changing the way that Axella works for us, and frankly, doing, in my opinion, what should have been done probably 20 years ago and using it the way it's supposed to be used. In fact, we just launched our building permits and inspection, the new module for that, a couple of weeks ago. You may recall, we had to shut down our system for a couple of days to do that. That was first of many modules that we'll be rolling out over the next year, year and a half, two years, et cetera, to get it to where it needs to be right now. So both of those things are happening right now. The transition to the cloud occurs this summer, and that's been a work in progress for a number of months. And then in parallel, we're actually changing the way that we use that software. So this is a huge priority for us, and it's absolutely fundamental to everything that we do.
Great, thank you, Dave.
Absolutely. The second project is a firewall refresh. Firewall are security appliances that regulate traffic, network traffic in and outside the county. It's a project that we're working on. It will go live this year. Human resources, case management system. This is the second year of this project. It intend to automate many of the personnel services tasks and so on. The property tax system replacement continues to make great progress. And I'm going to invite here in a minute Brian McLean, he's our project manager for project, to give you a more status update on it. Social health information exchange, I'll be speaking to that a little bit more. And then the last project is a voting system selection. Our voting system support will end before the 2026 gubernatorial election. And working with our registrar of voter who is here today, we intend to kind of go out to market and look what other systems are out there. Those systems have to be approved by the Secretary of State and the Federal Election Assistant Commission as well. We have two projects successfully completed, and, and for projects to be completed doesn't mean the work on them is over. It's the implementation period is over. The first one is the Board of Supervisors Constituent Management System, and the second one is the Department of Health Services Behavioral Health Semi-Statewide Electronic Health Record System. For the social health information exchange, it's a very ambitious project, and it aims really to kind of to create a county-wide data infrastructure that links data from health, social services, and criminal justice and housing. The project team selected Innovasar as the vendor for this project, and we envisioned this project really kind of to be completed in three phases. The first phase will build the core infrastructure, integrate data from health, social services, criminal justice, and housing. The second phase will launch the community health portal that really kind of takes all that data and makes sense of it, and start the rollout. The third phase is really expanding the analytics and expanding the rollout to countywide partners and so on. Next, I would like to invite Brian to come, Ryan to come in and give a status update on the tax system.
All right, thank you, Rami. My name is Ryan McLean, and as the, as the project manager, it is my pleasure to share with you the status of the property tax system replacement project. I'd like to start with some background, move into where we are exactly, and then, of course, what's next. So property taxes are an important source of revenue for the county, school districts, cities, and special, special districts. Managing over $2.8 billion of property taxes is a vital and important part of our county's responsibilities. So naturally, of course, the goal of the project is to create, is to ensure and continue to manage the complexity of our property taxes with the same accuracy and efficiency we have been doing, and of course, making some improvements along the way. Our existing system was designed in 1980, consists of 9,800 separate programs and more than 25 ancillary systems. So it is definitely time to replace it and upgrade it. The new system will be an overall improvement, improving security, efficiency, reporting, accuracy, constituent interaction, just to name a few. The project did start, I would say, in 2021. That's when the RFP analysis began, and then the implementation began in April of 2023. I'm very, very happy to say that we currently do not have any major issues. We are on time and we are within budget. We are slated to go on, to go live in the next six months, this September of this year. Our final phase of this project actually begins this month. So a little bit of how we know we're doing, we're on track. To help organize and track a project of this size, it was broken up into 16 major project milestones, each milestone representing a major step forward in the project or a major accomplishment within the project. As you can see, we've completed 12 out of 16 of those project milestones. Some of those bigger ones are full gap analysis, development on all related business processes around property taxes, of course, and integration with our internal systems. The other half of this project, significant one, has to do with data. So we have to convert all the historical and current property tax data from the last 10 to 12 years. As you can imagine, with all the different sources of data and where that's coming from, it's quite the complex accomplishment, I guess you would say, in order to get that into the system, and we have been, so far, it's going very smooth. Some of the ways that we're making sure that that takes place is we have not only digital verifications of the data as it's going into the system and being extracted, but also our human tax experts within the county are analyzing that data as well through data verifications. And we've completed five out of six of those. Our last one is a remote verification, should be coming up pretty soon. And also each month, we do a full data extract. So every month, we convert all of that data into the new system and make sure and check for errors and that it's going to be, that it's accurate and ready to go for when we do go live in September. And because I do like statistics, I think it's kind of fun just to kind of show a little bit of how much is involved in this project. We've had over 977 meetings thus far. We've had over 25 trips from the vendor, 6,879 tickets, which is our digital system for tracking questions, discussion items, action items, that sort of a thing, quite a few. So yeah, a lot of notes too, over 2,800 pages. That's just on the vendor side. That does not include the county side. So what's coming up? As we enter into the final phase of the project, we'll see more than 10 visits from the vendor, and that will help us execute full system testing. That's going to be covering all the processes, as well as the integration with our internal systems. After that, we'll go into constituent, well, actually, it has already started, constituent communication. Our plan there, of course, is to reduce as much surprise as possible and communicate what a win this is for the county and the constituents long term. Moving to training, well, we'll cover not just those that were a part of the project, but everyone that will be touching the system. And I just kind of wanted to highlight this because I think it's good to know, a little bit of reassurance, is that after we go live in September, the vendor, as well as the entire implementation team on both sides, will be present for several months after go-live to ensure that any issues that may come up, however minor, will be covered and will have a little extra help, so to speak, as we go through that transition. So if you look to the left there, that 83%, looking at the project timeline on a calendar, so starting from April 2023 to September, where we are slated to go live, we are 83% of the way through the project, through implementation. The percent budget spent so far is 44.3%, totaling around $21 million. This is absolutely aligned with our current spending plan, as we expect to increase spend as we get closer to go-live. Okay, and then before we go into questions, I just wanted to take this opportunity to take a moment and recognize all the people involved in this project. We have 40-plus with the county, not including additional teams that are not necessarily directly related to the project, but of course, are touching the project. And Grand Street Group, which is the vendor behind taxes software, which we are implementing, they have over 50 people involved as well. Everyone on this project is doing a fantastic job from all different groups. We have finance, in finance, we have tax collector, auditor, treasury, the assessor, Department of Technology, just to name a few. It's been, it's been a pleasure working with everyone. So with that, I will open it up to questions. I know we also have Rami Karina Zollers, the IT Division Chief, Department of Technology, and Chad Rindi, Director of Finance, available to help answer any questions as well.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez?
Well, Rami and Ryan, I just want to thank you for your presentation today. I think anytime we can make an investment in technology that increases efficiency, I think it's a good investment from the county, so I just wanted to say that. good investment from the county. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll join my colleague in thanking you as well. I did have one question. I apologize, again, trying to multitask up here if you mentioned it during your slide presentation, but is there any estimation of what we can expect in terms, when it comes to property tax technology improvements, what we can expect in terms of, I'll just chalk it up as kind of minimal leakage? And so in other words, will we actually see maybe a slight difference in captured revenue?
Go ahead. No, I don't anticipate even, I mean, slight, I mean, you define slight, I would say we're talking .001 of pennies. You know, we did analyze the rounding of, of the pennies. So we're looking at, I mean, we're talking, you know, maybe a dollar fifty worth of difference in 28 or in billions. So no, I would say.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support. We really appreciate the trust and faith that you guys put in the Department of Technology in executing all these projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rami. Job well done. This was just a report, correct?
No, we are looking to approve the technology.
Oh, we are? Okay.
I'll go ahead and move item number 29.
Chair, a little second. Please vote. Thank you. I assume we didn't have any public speakers.
We did not.
Okay. All right. Next item, please.
Item number 30 is the referral of fiscal year 2025-26 new and newly funded projects and the five-year capital improvement plan to the County Planning Commission for the review of project consistency with the general plan.
Morning, Chair Serna and Board of Supervisors. Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. County ordinance requires that the board review the new and newly funded projects and send them to the Planning Commission for review to determine consistency with the general plan. This is not the full capital improvement plan, but just the new and newly funded projects, as there are many projects being constructed throughout the county, and full capital improvement plan will be provided during the budget hearings in June. This year, for the Department of Airports, there are two new projects located at Executive Airport, 14 new projects at the International Airport. A notable new project is the West Apron pavement expansion project, and six new projects at Mather Airport totaling $35.2 million over the five-year period. For county buildings and capital construction, there are three new projects totaling approximately $1.9 million over the five-year period. For regional parks, there are two newly funded projects and five new unfunded projects totaling $235,000 over the five-year period. For transportation, there are six new projects, and the significant projects in the transportation category are the new AC overlay projects. The total amount associated with the new projects is approximately $36.6 million excluding prior year expenditures over that five-year period. For water resources drainage, there is one new project for $775,000 over the five-year period excluding prior year expenditures. And for water resources supply, there are two new projects. Two projects to note within the water, water resources are the PFAS well treatment projects and the Poppy Ridge Water Treatment Plant Phase Three Tank Project. The total for the water supply projects is approximately $28.4 million over the five-year period. The action requested is for this item to be forwarded to the Planning Commission for review with consistency with the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, very good. Do we have anyone to speak on this matter?
We do not.
Okay. We do need to take action?
I will move the recommended action for this item.
Okay.
Is it just direction or do we need a motion?
There, yes, it is action to forward it to the Planning Commission, so.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Okay, please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item number 31 is to introduce an ordinance adding Sacramento County Code Title 4, Chapter 4.08, regarding short-term rental regulation and licensing, raving the full reading and continuing to April 22, 2025 for adoption.
Good morning, Chair Serna, members of the board. My name is Laura Jacobson, Assistant Tax Collector with the Department of Finance, and we're here today to introduce a new ordinance to regulate short-term rental in Sacramento County. So there's been, as you all know, a huge increase in short-term rentals over the last decade. Currently, we have 250 to 500 listed on, on a wide variety of platforms such as Airbnb and BRBO. We have currently 107 licensed. Those numbers fluctuate over time as people start and stop doing that, and we are currently working on outreach. There are some current regulations in the Sacramento zoning code, such as the type of property that can be used, which is a primary residence or ADU legalized for residential use prior to January 1, 2020. It must be an accessory used to their primary residence. You can only have two persons per room. There's a limit on the length of stay, which is 29 days or less. And small personal gatherings are allowed, but large types of weddings or parties are not.
Is that the common sense part of the, the regulations? There's no number threshold?
Yeah. And we're going to add some more common sense regulations.
All right, very good.
If this is adopted, yes. So the zoning code was adopted in June of 2019 and then amended again in July of 2024. Our Department of Finance request is to approve the ordinance to enhance regulations and ensure the health, welfare, and safety of the public. If approved, the application would require additional information from the operator.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt here. Supervisor Rodriguez?
I just want to get clarification on the prior page. So if it was built before 2020, it can have short-term use?
If it was legalized for residential use, like the building permit was for residential use, it meets certain requirements.
And then after 2020, there are no long-term beyond 29 days?
For ADU, you cannot use an ADU built after January 1, 2020.
You cannot use it for an AD, for a, for a, for a short-term rental. Okay, yes. Thank you. That's what I thought.
Yeah. Oh, I went the wrong way. I'm sorry. So the application requires additional information, and this applies to hosts violating short-term rentals. They must be current with their property tax and transient occupancy tax to be renewed. The ordinance would also give authority for us to deny or revoke a license for short-term rental if they were acting outside the conditions of the license or had open code enforcement or building, building inspections violation cases. We would require the operators to resolve those cases timely. Failure to correct would lead in denial of a renewal or denial of a new application or revocation of the license. We also would require additional operational standards, record-keeping requirements, an informational flyer to be hung in a, in a location that's easily visible to the renters, which would include local contact information, the location of all fire extinguishers, and it would have a requirement for smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, which are not a current requirement. And then they would have to show on the flyer how they're going to mitigate public nuisances like parking and noise. So the fiscal impact to the county is there are no expected costs to the county since we are already licensing short-term rentals. The potential revenue from administrative penalties is not expected to be significant. The goal of the ordinance is always to bring people into compliance. It's not to issue fines or penalties. Those are kind of a last resort. We'll have tools to get compliance through suspension, revocation, penalties are a last resort again. The penalty amounts can range from $250 to $25,000. We have no expectation to ever issue a penalty as high as $25,000. We expect it would be in the lower range of $250, because again, our goal is compliance, not to issue penalties.
I'm just curious, what would constitute a $25,000 penalty?
Well, it would have to be something very egregious. We haven't even seen anything like that in Sacramento County. That's a state maximum.
But is that typically something that has accrued because of consistent and frequent non-compliance, or is that a one-time, like, you know, free-for-all party and, you know, people are parking 25 cars on people's lawns? I mean.
Right. Yeah, we would more than likely revoke the license if somebody did that rather than issue a $25,000 penalty.
Gotcha.
And we did collaborate with planning, the Planning Division of Community Development to make sure we didn't conflict with the zoning code and that the proposed regulation aligned with the current zoning code. And we did do outreach efforts last month. We emailed the proposed ordinance to all 107 licensed short-term rental hosts, and we got no response regarding the proposal. So we don't feel that this is going to be controversial. We also informed Visit Sacramento of the proposed regulations. So our next steps. Today, we're here for the first reading. We'll come back on April 22 for adoption, and then the ordinance will become effective on May 23, 2025. Does anyone have questions?
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Laura, and thank you for the question, Supervisor Serna. Animal house and old school is what pops into my head, probably like, I think Supervisor Hume was thinking the same thing.
Where's Otter?
That's right. I appreciate this. Can you tell me a little bit about, and these all seem very reasonable. I appreciate your work here. How did you, did you look, you looked at other ordinances from other jurisdictions and just kind of, can you tell me about the process a little bit?
Yeah, we looked at other ordinances from other jurisdictions. We also worked with code enforcement, county council, too, to make sure that we're not out of line with anything in that code enforcement or planning has in their ordinances.
Okay, there's nothing really out, there's no big outlier in anything you're proposing.
Right.
The other question, so the question I had, we had a little discussion yesterday during my briefing, if sometimes issues do come up with neighbors, right, who have one of these short-term rentals next to them, what is the process for a neighbor to complain if there's an issue related to a short-term rental?
Right. We always ask people to file a report with 311, and then it can be parsed out to the correct agency. So if they're operating a short-term rental without a license, it would come to business licensing. If they are violating the conditions on the license, it might go to code enforcement or to business licensing. So 311 is always the best method to file a complaint.
Okay. I mean, I think I'm supportive of this today. I just think, it seems to me, instead of someone having to go through 311, maybe if there's a mechanism, and I don't know if any of the other ordinances have this, for a neighbor to have a contact for the property owner, just contact them directly if there's an issue, to be able to resolve it at a lower level.
Yeah. So I know, I don't want to speak for planning, but when they approve the, so to operate a short-term rental, you have to have a permit from planning and a business license from the Department of Finance. Planning sends out neighborhood notifications when it's, when a permit is approved, so that they can notify the neighbors of who is responsible and the contact information. So there is notification to neighbors for contact information.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. You alluded to the fact that the outreach was done in consultation with Visit Sacramento. What, what was their ultimate, where'd they land?
They didn't. We notified them by email and didn't really have a response. They said thank you for letting us know.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Laura. Quick question. So the 107 resident, the ones that were sent out messages, what was it, 107?
Yes, 107.
Those are, all of those that are already registered?
Yes, are already licensed and permitted.
Right. So, but I imagine this ordinance is really targeting those built after 2020 that are being used as ADUs that are not registered as ADUs.
Well, it's really targeting everyone, whether licensed or not with regulations. It helps us bring people into compliance and to make sure they're operating within the bounds of their permit and license. So we do have, we did a contract with a short-term rental host compliance company about four years ago, and they do outreach to unlicensed short-term rentals on our behalf to help bring them into compliance.
Because that's really the target, I mean, I imagine, those that are already licensed and utilizing the ADU and paying their TOT taxes, they're good.
Yes.
It's the ones after 2020 that were built that are utilizing it as an ADU, sorry, as a, as a short-term rental that are not registered as short-term rentals. Is that correct?
Right. And what happens if they apply, planning looks at the application first to make sure they meet the requirements under the zoning code, and they will see if it's an ADU, if they have the proper permits, building permits, and that it's been legalized for this type of use.
Is there a way to identify those that are being utilized for a short-term but are not registered?
For ADUs or a short-term?
Or short-term?
Yeah, that's one of the things our host compliance company does.
Okay.
They go out on 125 different platforms and scrape the information to gather who is operating.
Very good. And as far as parking, if, if the ADU is near transit within a half a mile, do they get a pass on providing the parking?
No.
Okay. Because I thought of, you know, for new construction that is close to transit, like a light rail, they are no longer required to provide parking for the new construction. Maybe that's commercial, in commercial. So I would imagine it would apply to this. But okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public sign up to address the board?
We do not.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Then I will look to my colleagues, ask for a motion.
Move, bro.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please vote.
That item does pass unanimously.
All right, very good.
Next item on the agenda is number 32. It's the Board of Supervisors 2025 appointments from Own Ranks to Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency and Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television. We are looking this morning for an appointment for District One, so you Chair Serna, to the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency and also Metro Cable Television.
I believe both are alternates, right?
Both are alternates.
Yes. So I'm happy then to appoint my brand-new chief of staff, Alma Munoz, to both. And I even, I haven't even had a chance to explain this to her, so she's watching. So congratulations.
Congrats, Alma.
And can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
All right.
Thank you. Item number 34 is County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. Just one comment for me. Metro Cable can show the picture that we've provided. Supervisor Serna, earlier, you mentioned us not necessarily relying on certain types of media, like certain papers. And I just wanted to let you know, we do reach out to a whole host of different social media, whether it's Nextdoor, Facebook, X, YouTube, Flickr, the whole, the whole gamut of social media. But one of the things that we launched last year, based on response from the board, which was to get our positive voice out, was we lost, we launched a County Conversations Sacramento County podcast. So so far, we've had eight individual podcast interviews with certain folks. You can see probation there. You can see homeless there, animal care, sustainability, parks, behavioral health, finance, and Dr. Kusirier with Public Health. We've had a great turnout with this. I've actually listened to it and learned some things myself. So I think it does a great job. It's hosted by our own Kim Nava, our Director of Public Information, and suggests that you subscribe if you have some time in the car to listen to it, and it's a great way to learn a little bit more. We release one about once a month, and so I'm not sure who's next on the list, but the last person that was on the list was our newly hired Shelby Boston, who's not pictured up there. She's the new Director of DCFAS, and they talked about social work, Social Worker Appreciation Month, along with all the good work that DCF is doing. And I just, I enjoyed it, and I thought I would share it with the board and put together this great graphic for you to look at.
Thank you, David. And I'm glad you made mention of this. I think this is a terrific way to let listeners understand directly from those who have made their careers serving the public in various capacities with Sacramento County, to get that, you know, to get that experience communicated and gives the public something, quite frankly, other than, you know, other media outlets, to really hear directly from the people that are implementing policy, that are dealing with challenges. It, I think, is a great way to demystify what county government and service delivery is and isn't. There's still, you know, it's kind of the nature of the beast, but there's still a lot of people out there that don't really have a grasp and understand. a lot of people out there that don't really have a grasp and understand not only what their county does and who the people are behind what we are about in terms of fulfilling our missions, but they, they just don't see it, especially in a capital city region because the legislature, the Capitol is so prevalent. So this is, this is a great way to, I think, make great inroads to really educating and communicating again what we proudly do around here. I would ask that, since Kim is rightfully the, the manager of this whole initiative, that maybe she gives some thought to extending invitations to the five of us to come in at some point during the year and maybe consider giving my colleagues, myself, an opportunity to express in a question-and-answer format. I assume that's kind of what this is.
That's exactly the format.
You know, what's, you know, what's important to us as, you know, individuals that have been duly elected to represent nearly 400,000 people in our districts and a fairly large urban county in the state of California, I think that some might find that pretty interesting. So hopefully Kim's listening and we'll see what happens, but do appreciate you mentioning that.
I, I do believe that that's on the list. We were trying to get a base of listeners first before we.
Yeah, you don't want to scare people away first. That would be bad.
But I think one of the other opportunities is, you mentioned a little bit about working for the county, and two things I would say is, I'm incredibly proud of the folks that you see on this, on this slide, and also the department heads do a fantastic job of what they do, especially these though. But the other piece is, we're working on interviewing our new Director of Personal Services, who's Joe Angulo, who started yesterday, and he's probably hearing this now for the first time like Alma did. We plan on talking a little bit about how to get jobs with Sacramento County and work for a great organization.
That's a great point to make in terms of not just kind of explaining the county, but how, explaining how you can come join the, possibly join the team.
Thank you.
Terrific. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Well, first I want to say I look forward to hearing the podcast. I think there's so much truth to when people get an insight into what goes on in government, they, it sort of humanizes the, the county in a, in a way that people know how it impacts them in their everyday lives. I want to give a big congratulations to District Four Resident Julian Jimenez, who continues on his battle with the Food Network on the Spring Baking Championship. He represents the Sacramento region very well, and some of the artwork in this, in this show is just amazing. But it goes, it's on Mondays, 5:00 and 8:00 PM. I also want to give a big congratulations to Benny Embers, who was named Small School Player of the Year by the SACB. Benny led the Robles High School Rams with an impressive 17 points per game and was instrumental in bringing home the team's first-ever section championship. The Rams had an incredible season. And also, it is Autism Awareness Month. April is designated as Autism Awareness Month, and I take a moment to reflect on the unique strengths of these individuals with autism. This is a good month to raise awareness, encourage understanding, and work together to a more supportive environment for everyone. I was invited to a fun, family fun day, Community Autism Festival on Saturday, April 19, from 12 to 3 at Ridge Point Elementary at 4680 Monument Drive in Sacramento, and that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you Supervisor Rodriguez. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and with your indulgence, I'd like to adjourn in memory of a.
Certainly, before we do that, I just want to make sure that there are not others here that have comments. Seeing none, please.
Thank you. So today I request that we adjourn in memory of a dear, dear family friend of mine and my family's Donna Dedering Parks. Donna Teresa Dedering Parks, known as Dones to friends and family, passed away peacefully surrounded by her family. She was 70 years old. Donna spent her life in the greater Sacramento area, where she built a legacy of love, friendship, and deep family pride, and a distinguished professional career. She attended Loretto and San Domenico High Schools and later graduated from St. Mary's College. In 2004, she was named the honorary mayor of Carmichael, a recognition given by the Carmichael Chamber of Commerce for her fundraising efforts and dedication to the community. She was an icon in her various professional industries, assisting and mentoring anyone who crossed her path. In her final years, she worked as a senior and elder healthcare consultant and advocate, ensuring those who needed help received it with compassion and care. Donna's greatest, Donna's greatest joy was spending time with her family, sharing laughter and making memories. Family was the center of Donna's world and she was the heart of it, a devoted wife to Richard Parks, a loving mother to Jenny, Katie, Andrew, and Dan, and a proud, proud grandmother to Russ, Molly, Libby, Ally, Lincoln, Keaton, and Jensen. She is also survived by her six siblings, and some of you here may know them, Jody, John, Pete, Peggy, Richard, and Paula Dedering, along with countless nieces, nephews, cousins, and dear friends. Donna loved to travel and embrace new adventures, but she was happiest when surrounded by those she loved. Her unshakable faith guided her throughout her life and gave her incredible strength. Donna's love, warmth, and light will live on in the hearts of all who had the joy of knowing her. She will be deeply missed. And on a very personal level, the Dedering family and the Desmond family, we all really grew up together, and Donna was a, a very, very close friend of my sisters, but a close friend to me and all my siblings and my parents, and she truly will be deeply missed and had a wonderful, positive impact on the community. And Mr. Chair, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Donna Dedering.
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Before we do adjourn, I just want to thank staff again for getting very prepared for yet another meeting. I think these meetings are beginning to show the product of an intentional effort to be more efficient. We're going to continue to try and do that, but I'm really pleased thus far with just kind of the pace, the cadence of things, and the fact that I think we're respecting people's time a little more so. But again, I think there's still even more room for improvement, so look for that to come. And with that, if there's no further business before this board, we will adjourn in loving memory of Donna Dedering Parks. We are adjourned.